Good morning. We will call the Pennington County Commission meeting for August 16th, 2016 to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection. Pledge of Allegiance led by Karen McGregor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the introduction of new employees.
Good morning. Nick Stroud, HR Director for Pennington County. Today, we have a number of new employees to introduce to you today, both from the Sheriff's Office and the rest of the county. I believe Lisa gave you a memo on those that were hired in late July and early August. So, I'm going to have them come up and introduce themselves, let you know what department or office they're in and what their job title is. So, you guys can go ahead and come on up.
My name is Matt Laidlaw, and I work for the Public Defender's Office, and I'm an Assistant Public Defender.
Erin Jensen Mills, paralegal at the Office of the Public Defender.
Welcome.
Morning. Angela Shute, State's Attorney's Office, as a Deputy State's Attorney.
Morning. My name is Alex Weiss, with the State's Attorney's Office, as a Deputy State's Attorney.
Good morning. My name is Liz Heidelberger, and I'm with the State's Attorney's Office, as the Young Adult Diversion Coordinator.
Awesome.
Good morning. I'm Vicki Hicks, Tax and Title Assistant with the Treasurer's Office. Thank you.
Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. And we're doing our quarterly hiring, so we have a group of new folks to introduce. And I guess we'll start here on the end, and they come up again, tell you their name and where they're going to be working, and anything else they want to tell you about themselves, I guess.
We have some life stories here.
Good morning. My name is Chris Caldwell. Pleased to be here. I'll be a Patrol Deputy with Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Morning. Chaz Foss, Patrol Deputy for Pennington County Sheriff's Office.
Thomas Mossman. I'll be a Corrections Officer with the Pennington County Jail.
Gordon Larson, Patrol Deputy, Pennington County Sheriff's Office.
Hello. My name is Teresa Rigio. I work for the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, as a Victim Specialist.
Brielle Schrock, Pennington County Jail, Corrections Officer.
Good morning. Crystal Pitchler, Pennington County Jail, Correctional Officer.
Good morning. I'm Phil Rivera. I'll be a Correctional Officer at JSC.
Wade Lockhart. I will be a Corrections Officer with the Pennington County Jail.
Morning. James Stever. I'll be a Correctional Officer at Pennington County Jail.
Good morning. I'm Miranda Meele. I'll be a Corrections Officer at JSC.
I'm Mary Finer. I'll be a Corrections Officer at Pennington County Jail.
Morning. My name's Scott Holtgren. I'm a new Victim Specialist with Pennington County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning. My name's Melanie McCall. I'm your new Registered Nurse for the jail.
Good morning. I'm Andrew Green, and I'll be a Correction Officer at JSC.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. Myron Canales would be a Patrol Deputy for Sheriff's Office, Pennington County. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is John Marcus Isaacson. I'm the new Patrol Deputy in Hill City, the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, and welcome. Okay, the next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Your Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the Consent Agenda to act on non-contrition and routine items quickly. The Consent Agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular Agenda at the request of a Board Member or a citizen. Today's Consent Agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 2nd, 2016, to authorize the purchase of road salt from Blackstrap Inc., per State Contract List Number 16979, as submitted by the Highway Department. Number eight is to declare surplus three Monroe Sanders under 5,000, ask surplus for the purpose of disposal as scrap metal, and to declare surplus one Monroe Sander, asset number 005452, ask surplus for the purpose of disposal of scrap metal, as submitted by the Highway Department. Number nine is approval of the adopt-a-highway application for an approximate two-mile portion of Reservoir Road by the Air Force Sergeants Association, as submitted by the Highway Department. Number 10 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of July 2016, as submitted by Human Resources. Number 11 is to declare the county-owned firearms, as presented, as surplus property for the purpose of trade, as submitted by the Sheriff's Office. Number 12 is to declare two sedans, both 2008 Chevrolet Malibus, as presented as surplus for the purpose of trade, as part of the 2016 planned vehicle replacement, as submitted by the Sheriff. Number 13 is to authorize the advertising to put out for bid to purchase two used sedans, model year 2015 or newer, as presented by the Sheriff. And finally, number 14 is to declare Unit Number 20, Asset Number 6115, a 2002 Dodge Caravan, assigned to the Penning County Sheriff's Office, as surplus to be turned over to the insurance company as a totaled vehicle, and to schedule a hearing at 9:15 a.m. on Tuesday, September 6th, 2016, to supplement this general fund sheriff's budget in the amount of $12,708 from the insurance proceeds.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the Consent Agenda removed?
Number 11, Mr. Chair.
Number 11. Any others?
How about number seven, please?
Which one?
Seven.
Any other items? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, with the exceptions of seven and eleven.
There's a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven.
Just a question, Tom. When we do our bids, you have Blackstrap, right? And they are not from South Dakota, they're from Nebraska?
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
Yep. Just wondering how we end up, and how we can end up, I guess is the word, with South Dakota vendors instead of out-of-state vendors, if at all possible, just to support our state. You already know where I'm going with it.
Yes. Tom Wills, the Highway Department. I'll start there.
Okay, thank you.
They have several people that bid the state contract. Nebraska Sand, I mean Nebraska Grain is another one, that get it quite often. It's just whoever's the cheapest for them. And typically, if we bid it, we get the same people, same price.
And I understand it's always a little bid, but I didn't know if there's something we could do that, in the state, that says, you know, that we should at least, I don't know how they would change the rules, because it's always a little bid, but, again, I like to support South Dakota vendors first, and I know they can low bid it, but how much of a difference was the other bidders?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. I could not tell.
Okay. Thank you.
Just kind of along the same side, didn't there used to be a South Dakota preference on bidding, five percent or some figure like that?
I'm not familiar with that. I'm not familiar with that. I know in Wyoming, we used to have that, but when I worked in Wyoming. But I'm not familiar with that with South Dakota.
Hey, do you know if they have any preference for, like that, through state, through the state on bidding, so we can try to at least end up with a South Dakota vendor on some of our products that we're using?
Just off the top of my head, I'm not sure about that. I can look into that.
Yeah. It's all good, and I understand the bidding process, but if all, I would like South Dakota to end up with it if we can, but thank you, Tom.
Anything further?
Make a motion to approve number seven on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, to approve item seven. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 11.
Mr. Chair, a number of questions for the Sheriff. I'll start with the toughest one. What's this going to cost us?
Good morning, again, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. If you deduct the value of the trade-in, it's a little over $21,000.
Then the net, the net's $21,000?
Pardon?
The net to us is $21,000.
Yep, $21,465, I believe is what it come to.
What's the life cycle on a typical weapon, firearm?
Sure, obviously depends on use. The prototype that Glock has of the one we're purchasing is approaching a million rounds that have been fired through it, which obviously is a long life cycle. We're looking at these probably in that eight-to-10-year window, over that timeframe, cycling some of the guns out. You know, some of us shoot less than others. If you're on our tactical team, you do a lot of shooting. If you're in the office, like me, you probably don't shoot as much. And so, it depends on the amount of utilization on the gun, and so, we'll get staggered over an eight-to-10-year window.
Hundred and some weapons, right? I haven't added them up, but there's over 100 here, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, 135.
You and I discussed staggering the purchases, but you figured just go ahead and do them lump sum every eight-to-10 years?
Correct. And the particular problem in this case, we're changing from a .40 caliber to a 9mm. So, if we staggered that over several years, then we'd be carrying two different types of weapons with two different types of ammunition. So, in as short a timeframe as possible, about a month, we want to get everybody converted over, so they're carrying the same type of weapon and the same ammunition. And just for a little background, we did a lot of study on this. We looked at, there was an FBI study, Sioux Falls Police Department study, and we looked at a lot of other data from other departments. When agencies converted from 9mm to .40 years ago, it was for the additional stopping power that the .40 caliber offered. Well, with technology and advancement in, you know, ballistics, we found a 9mm round that actually gives us more stopping power than our current .40 caliber round we're using. So, the advantages of the 9mm is, you know, the cost is less, and then there's about 30% less recoil with a 9mm. So, when you have marginal shooters, they're more accurate in their shooting. So, those are the gains that we get in converting to the 9mm.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you some of the same questions, and you answered them, and it makes sense. Your trade-in is $21,000, you have 135 weapons, and why change from a .40 caliber to a 9mm? So, I appreciate those answers, and for the public as well, so they know. And actually, and I actually have a 9mm, and then you guys took me out and did some training on it, so I appreciate that as well. So, I like the 9mm myself, so, for shooting, it's smooth. So, thank you for answering the questions.
All right. Anything further? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to declare the county-owned firearms, as presented, as surplus property for the purpose of trade.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion.
Thanks, Kevin.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item is item 15.
My name is Rex Conrad. I've been up here before, and I've spoken with somebody by phone. Last time I was here, I had questions about vouchers, and some of the way that was handled, and then I also asked you, along with those vouchers, to perform your elected duties about those vouchers. The only response that I got in turn for that was belittlement, and was told to sit down. I guess that's enough history, as far as where I'm coming from. I've got three questions today I would like to ask. And the first one is, I would like you to identify the statute you use to adopt your Code of Conduct. And these questions don't need to be answered now. The second question is, how could you gang up on a Commissioner for performing their elected duties? And the third one is, does the snide and catty comments between Commissioners during meetings fall somewhere under this Code of Conduct? And I just have one last comment to bring up, is if you're going to continue down this PC path that Mr. PJ and Mr. Attorney, I don't remember what his name is, are leading you, I too am feeling harassed, hurt, offended, saddened by your actions and comments. So, should I file a Code of Conduct? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 16, Central State Fair.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Ron Jeffries, General Manager of Central State's Fair. I also have with me today Matt Olson, the SDSU Extension 4H Youth Program Advisor. We'd like to just give you a quick little update about Central State's Fair. I'll start with by telling you that in the current political whirlwind, discussions that were going on in the office, we said, rather than voting against one candidate or another, wouldn't it be great to vote for something fun? And that's where we came up with the theme, Vote for Fun, Central State's Fair. It's just a kind of a pun and play on the current political cycle, but we're having fun with it. We've had many social media contests, and it's really proven to be a real fun deal for us, and we're excited to kick things off Friday at 3:00. Now, Friday at 3:00, we'll have our ribbon cutting, and you're all invited to attend. We'd like to have you join us. We'll be at the McDonald's stage, media presentation, some words, and then we'll retire to have a few orders. So, love to have you come join us for that. I've asked Matt to come up because, for the first time in several years, the 4H program from Pennington County is with us at the Central State's Fair. So, Matt?
So, as Ron mentioned, I'm Matthew Olson. I work for SDSU Extension as the 4H Youth Program Advisor. And this is an exciting and busy week for us, as you probably know. And as Ron mentioned, it's the first time in about six years that we've partnered with Central State's Fair to do our Achievement Days and also our events. So, for this year, we've got roughly around 1,400 static exhibits that'll be on display in our 4H building. And then also, well, new, or at least for the first time in six years, we've got nine events happening during the Central State's Fair, from the first Friday all the way until the last Saturday of the fair. So, we've got something going on every day of the fair, and we've also are really excited. One of our 4H clubs is doing a pie and ice cream booth, and they're going to be selling SDSU ice cream out of the 4H building. So, if you're a fan of SDSU ice cream, come by. The earlier you can get there, the better. They only got 20 tubs of it, so hopefully, it goes quickly.
Okay, Matt, not to interrupt you, but what's SDSU ice cream different than any other ice cream?
It's from South Dakota, so it's not just whoever we went to to get the cheapest one. It's from SDSU, and I've been told, I don't know if it's true or not, but they invented cookies and cream ice cream. So, we've got cookies and cream ice cream from SDSU, so come and get some. Oh, I had a thought, but got sidetracked by the SDSU ice cream. We've also gone along with the Vote for Fun theme, and we've got four things that the public can come in and vote for fun for, their favorite 4H club display, their favorite photograph, which we do every year, but we're pushing it as the Vote for Fun, and then also their favorite flavor of SDSU ice cream and favorite flavor of pie. So, there's lots to do at the 4H building, so hopefully, everybody can come check it out.
And I can tell you from the fair's perspective, it's been absolutely wonderful to have Matt come onboard. Just been a great partnership and working together and moving forward to advance both of our causes, and he's done a fabulous job. You really, we've done well with this young man. I want to mention that we're having, for the first time, a Longhorn Cattle Show, and it'll be the first Sunday, and it's not the beef breed, but it's the people like to see it breed. It's the Big Horn, and so, we've got about 60 entries in the Longhorn Cattle Show, which I know, it's huge. It's bigger than some of the breeds at the stock show. I mean, it's a big deal. It's a world qualifier, so they can gain points at this show to advance to the world show for the Longhorn Association. So, very prestigious show, we're very excited about that. We're bringing in an exotic petting zoo for the kids, so they'll be able to see impalas and zebras and camels and some of the other animals that are not native to South Dakota. We've got a bunch of new carnival rides, it'll be here with Carnival Americana. We've got the Bud Light Beer Garden, which is a new spot. We used to have a beer tent, and now Budweiser has stepped up and brought in their portable beer garden, so we'll have televisions and have the Olympics on during the fair, so you can stop in and have a Bud Light and watch the Olympics and enjoy that for the adults. We're also working with the Police Department for the Freshman Impact Program, the other side of the spectrum. We're helping the young people learn about drunk driving. And so, one of the programs that are being produced by the Sheriff's, or by the Police Department, will be there at the fair throughout the run. In addition to that, many, many free things all day long, from strongman competitions to magicians and musicians, and just a great musical lineup at the Black Hills Power, or Black Hills Energy Concert Series, ranch rodeo, Supercross, and the Range Days Rodeo. And the thing I wanted to mention about the Range Days Rodeo, we do a military appreciation where we honor all our veterans, and they, Thursday, the 25th, anybody with military service can come with their ID and their dependents, get in the gate for free, and get into the rodeo that night for free. So, we honor all of our veterans with that. And then, this year, for the first time, we're going to do a First Responders' recognition on Saturday, the 27th. And in honor of the Sheriff, firefighters, 911, police departments, we're going to bring those group of people in and recognize the services that they provide for our communities on a daily basis. So, we're very excited that the First Responders with ID will get on the grounds and into the rodeo on Saturday, the 27th, for free as well. So, very excited about it. So, questions?
Mr. Chair, do you have that little pocket folder that my dad loves?
I've got them right back here. They're right by the agendas. I'll get some up to you.
Okay, yeah, my dad really likes those. Those are great.
Yeah, they are.
Thanks.
The commercials that you guys put on this year are awesome, by the way. During the Olympics, which I love the Olympics, so I haven't missed much of the Olympics, but you guys have been in between as well, and heck, those are some really good commercials and promoting you guys really well. So, hopefully, the public comes out this year. We've got some changes that are pretty amazing, that are public, or how do you say, community-oriented. And Matt's group for the kids went in there the other day, had a little girl hand me a handful of pretzels and some other, haven't been around, three-year-olds for a long time, but handed me the whole bundle, and I didn't even know what the one snack was, so my dog ate it, but anyway. But they had quite the group of kids in there, and it was pretty fun. So, he's doing an awesome job, and it looks like the fairgrounds are making some positive changes. So, that's awesome as well, to be even more community-oriented, so we appreciate it.
Thanks for noticing, and you know, and obviously, with some of your help, we've got several areas that we put some grass into, some areas that before weren't quite as pleasant. We've done some decorative rock in some areas, some additional fencing, which controls traffic, and spruces up some areas, keeps trailers from pulling on areas they shouldn't be pulling in, and planted some trees. So, we've done quite a bit of cleanup to the grounds this year. It looks really good.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Next item is item 17.
The first item, item A is a...
You are?
I'm Karen McGregor, from the Auditor's Office. Is a transfer of two alcoholic beverage licenses from the former owner of the High Seagull Lodge, Carol Duncan, to High Seagull Lodge, under Danger Girl Endeavors LLC, and it's a retail on-off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License, and a retail on-off-sale wine license. Fees have been paid, and the information has been sent to the Sheriff's Office for approval. I move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item is a budget supplement for weed and pest, and I'm going to ask Scott to come up if there's any questions on this, but it's a $25,000 budget supplement, supported by over-collected revenues, and I have a motion here. And the motion that our office needs is to approve a supplement to the general fund weed and pest budget in the amount of $25,000 from unanticipated current year revenue.
Any questions for Karen or Scott?
Nope. I move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Karen. Item 18.
I don't think he thought we were going to be this quick.
Building and grounds.
Mr. Chair, will we move on to 19, since Shannon's here?
Okay, let's move on to item 19, and then we'll come back to item 18.
I'm barely prepared. I just walked in. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization, you have one abatement request in front of you. This comes to you from my office, and it is very simple. This is an abatement for 2015. It's a mobile home that burned in 2014. The owner, whoever used to own it anyways, can't be found, and the Treasurer had, has already deemed the 2013 tax as uncollectible, but through all of that process, we missed the 2015 assessment that now is up for collection and should be abated.
I'll move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion.
Can you keep talking?
Yeah, but then I'm going to get myself in trouble. That's usually how that works.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. They're coming? You want to kind of fill in until they get here?
Not really.
You don't have to talk about buildings.
Actually, Judge, how's some of the remodel that they've been doing at the courthouse doing, and how's it looking?
Jeff Davis, one of the Circuit Judges, stand in for Buildings and Grounds here for a minute, I guess. To answer your question, Commissioner, things are coming along really well. When everybody gets here, of course, we're going to ask for the signature on the first floor remodel. Buildings and Grounds, up till now, has done just an admirable job, as you know, from touring the courthouse. And we're now ready to go into first floor and establish three more courtrooms and update some of the HVAC equipment. And it was determined that that would be better to bid it out and have it done. Buildings and Grounds is pretty well strapped with all of their duties right now, and we're frankly, where we need the space. Court Services will move into their new space, probably by the end of the month, and that's come along very well. I mean, I just, I can't say enough good about Buildings and Grounds and the work they do. What else do you want to talk about? Hope they're hurrying.
Well, if people have a chance, they need to go see what Buildings and Grounds did themselves to your courtroom, because it's amazing.
It is amazing.
That's why I told Mike Peterson, he might have some girl tendencies, I guess is a good, feminine tendencies, because it's amazing... is a good, feminine tendencies, because it's amazing, the intricate in the stuff. It's not, not that a guy can't do that, but it's pretty cool, the colors and the different things, how he matched. And he's, he's very talented. And his guys, that they, remember, they poured those pieces themselves to make it look like the other decor that was in there, like the old antique. I don't know what you call the...
The dental.
What's it called?
The dentals and gargoyles.
It's, it's pretty awesome.
No, and they, they did match. Most of that went back to original, except where it was so structurally damaged that it was just cross prohibitive. The skylights couldn't go back in. Some of the paint was the original color, and we could chip it and match it. And as you point out, on some of the reliefs on top of the columns, they had to be rebuilt. And Ross Neiman would come in in the morning and lay a little plaster and let it dry, because it arches way out and had to support itself. I mean, it was quite a process.
Well, they've done...
But I would encourage anybody to come by.
Well, they've done that throughout the courthouse with just Buildings and Grounds guys, and some of this stuff they can't do, and that's why we bid it out and do these type of projects. But the things that they can do, if you look in that courthouse, there's a lot they can do and have done to save us money.
Up until now...
Yes, sir.
They have done everything.
Yes, sir.
So this bid out will be an adventure for all of us, I guess.
Thank you. We were just talking about how you had feminine tendencies, Mike Peterson.
Off the hook.
He's a great decorator.
Thank you, thank you, Judge.
We were talking about your courthouse, Mr. Peterson, how beautiful it is.
He always, he always talks too much. That's why, Mr. Cool. He sends his backup up there.
Item eighteen A.
Good morning. I'm Mike Cool, Pankey County, Buildings and Grounds. My apologies for us running late. We were trying to keep an eye on it, and it got away from us, so I apologize for that. Make sure that I'm on the right. First of all, the item eighteen A, I'm seeking authorization to be able to advertise for two projects that we currently are developing and getting close to wrapping up. The Highway Shop and Office would be the first project, and then we are also seeking authorization and setting a bid date for the courthouse entrance. Both of these, I should apologize, we're studying, trying to set a date for these. We're just trying to get ahead of the, on the schedule, so you guys are aware of what we're trying to do. One of the things that we've came up through, what we noticed with Block ninety-nine, there's a new requirement in regard to the county bidding pro, new buildings that we opened them during a commission meeting. So we're trying to follow that type of, those requirements. And the courthouse addition could probably be debatable whether that's a new building or not, but since it is in addition to the building, we are proceeding as a new building. So we are trying to honor those, those requirements from state law. I am, I'd like to also clarify that I had originally, excuse me, asked for November eighth as the special meeting for the courthouse bid opening. I didn't realize that at the time, that it was, that's election day, so it isn't probably very suitable for that. So I would like to adjust that to opening it during a regular commission meeting on the first, and that would be at, towards the end of the meeting at eleven o'clock is when we'd like to receive bids to that time, and then have you open them shortly after that. You guys are getting pretty fast in moving through your agendas these days, so eleven o'clock seems like it would be appropriate time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Mike, the awarding of that bid would, if we're changing the bid opening to November first, the awarding date would be what?
We would still be looking to try to award on November fifteenth.
Okay.
And the Highway Shop, we would be, we are seeking a special commission meeting for October eleventh, and we're trying to award the contract on October eighteenth.
Mr. Chairman, what's the hurry?
What's the hurry?
Yeah.
Well, in regard to, we are trying to get these going, that we can have some benefit of the better weather yet. With the Highway Shop, the initial portion of this project is relocation of the fuel stations out there. So the sooner that we can get going on those, the better off we are. We don't, we'd rather not get into an opportunity where we have open ground and an open hole for those fuel stations and have that, have that work underway as soon as possible.
Do you think October fourth is too, too soon to get a bid out?
Well, the, the, in terms of a special meeting, well, i- if you want to proceed that way, I would ask that you, we bid at the next, at the next commission meeting. I don't want to take it back, and in regard to the design team and cutting a week off of their time schedule. We're, right now, we're really, we're kind of pushing up against it. We're trying to maximize the, try and make the most of this year's construction window in terms of opening up the ground, so as much as possible.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I do share the concern. What's the rush? And I can't, in my wildest imagination, imagine why a special meeting to open bids. I can't, in my wildest imagination, imagine a special meeting just to open bids.
To, to open bids. And I, I, I guess I have to go back to, this is what we did, how we proceeded with the last project on, for this building, and I'm trying to kind of follow the same precedent that we had set with this one. If the desire of the commission is to, to do it at a regularly scheduled meeting, I would just ask that we don't move it up a week, that we do it on, do it on the following.
And Mr. Chair, my second comment is, there'd be two new people before long. They're already elected. They're going to join us next year. I'm adamant that these projects be delayed until those two folks get a chance to vote on them. I want the record, excuse me, I'm not done.
Go ahead. I thought you were done, George.
I want the record to clearly show that I'm adamantly against this kind of expenditure for both of these projects, both of these projects. And I won't single either one of them out, but I don't think that there's any rush to do either one of them. And these other two folks coming on, they're elected. They're elected, and they ought to have a voice in this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just want to point out something. If we had not had just a primary election, then we wouldn't know who these people were until after the general. So I kind of get confused about that argument, because reality is, if we had a general election, we wouldn't know who those people are, and we couldn't involve them in decisions till after the November meeting. So I, I'm just kind of curious why you always use that argument.
The thing I would like to point out, I guess, is that we are, if we're going to wait, if we were waiting till the end, end of the year, we are, we're starting right in the dead of winter with, with work.
Mr. Chief, I might respond. Irrespective whether it was a fall election or not, as of June of this year, there will be two new members come January on this board. So your argument about November election is immaterial, irrelevant.
Mr. Chair, I have to agree with Nancy. Nancy and Lindell were elected. They've been here nine years. They have experience. Because you have two new ones doesn't make your vote go your way, if that's what you're thinking, George. Number two, they're very competent. Are you saying that these two aren't competent anymore? They're not able to make decisions? And, and here's the second part. Here's the big part. How many meetings have you come to Commissioner Farabee to know the information? Because I'm having people, people are shaking their head out there, but that's huge. You're going to figure that out when you become a representative. The lady's shaking her head. If you don't know the information that you are voting on, because people are texting me on different stuff, you know what? I meet with them. Call me. But if you never show up for a meeting, and you just read this information, and you tell the public off this packet what you think is happening, you're going to be in trouble a lot of times, because what's going to happen is the facts are going to come out. And here's the bottom line. This process for this Highway Department hasn't gone on for like a couple months. It's been on for years. Fueling stations at different information that you have no facts about, that you throw out to people, is wrong. Because what's happening is, we're having your people come up here, George, and you wave them up here, or you little, do a little head shake from the audience.
Mr. Chair, she's out of order.
Okay? That's wrong. No, I'm, hold on just a second, sir.
She's out of order. Not the chair.
I think you're both out of order, so let's just stop this focus right now and get back to the item that's on the agenda.
Well, Commissioner...
No.
Peterson, you have to know the information before you throw it out there. People say, "We attack him." What are you doing when you're doing that to the commit, to the people up front that are, people that are department heads, and saying, "We need two more different people to do this. Otherwise, he's too incompetent people." That's what he's saying.
And I'm asking you again to stop.
I'm sorry, but I'm getting tired of being chastised by people when he's doing the same thing worse than we are, throwing unfactual information out there to people so they think we're having a problem with George.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I make a motion, please?
Please.
Wow. I'd like to move to authorize the advertising for bids for the Highway Department Office and Shop project, and schedule a special board meeting to open bids just after two o'clock PM on October eleventh.
Do you want to talk about the contract award also, or not?
The, I, I put that on there for informational purposes for you in terms of when we would be seeking authorization. We want to give us ourselves a, a little bit of room so that we can review, make sure that we are awarding to the correct bidder in terms of the lowest responsible bidder on the project. So we do go through a review process after we receive bids.
Okay, is there a second to?
Second.
We have a second to Commissioner Troutman's motion. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, make a substitute motion that these two projects be delayed until the second meeting in January of twenty seventeen.
Could you tell us, could you tell us why?
Substitute motion. Is there a second to that motion?
No.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the original motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote against it, because I, not that I don't think we need a Highway Department or a new shop, but we've got, how many building projects we got going right now and been, I mean, we have millions and millions of dollars we're spending. And I'm not sure that you, you're capable of doing one or two projects. I'm not sure that you can handle all these, Mike. But that's my, I'm not, I'm going to vote against it, just not that, I don't think we need it. I just think we're maybe pushing the button a little too soon, and maybe we, I know, we postponed it for a while. Maybe we need to postpone it for another year or two. And that's why I didn't second George, is because I don't want it bid in January either.
Anything further on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I, I'll reiterate that I think that we're spending taxpayers' money way, way, way too leniently. And the budget, we'll get to, round of the budget, we're going to increase the taxpayers. We just make no bones about it, we're going to increase taxes. They're not preferable. This is all part of it. These folks, we are the servants of the people. We need to quit spending their money like we're drunken sailors. And I'd ask...
Out of order, please. We are talking about bids, sir.
I'd ask...
I was, I was, I was ruled out of order for the same reason.
I'd ask, Mr. Chair, if the public wants to comment on this motion.
Which motion? You had three. I think you were trying to explain to us.
Okay.
What were you talking about, George?
Any, the motion is to schedule a bid opening meeting for October eleventh. And if anyone has any comments about the advisability of a date or the time, in terms of the motion itself, please step forward and say what you have to say. But it has to be about the motion.
Commissioners, my name is Bruce Meister, and I kind of think you're spending our money a little bit too fast. Also, and you know, if you're going to do this thing in October, you're going into winter. I don't think they're going to get the project finished. And I would really probably much rather see it done, say, in the springtime, so that, so that when it gets going, it, it keeps going. You know, it's not going to stop. So that's, that's my comment. I'd just like to see it delayed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll have a roll call vote.
No.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, next item is the question of the courthouse entrance.
So I, I would be seeking to set a bid opening date at the regularly scheduled meeting on November first. And my thought is that we would receive bids till eleven o'clock at the commission office, and then open them in this meeting shortly after that for the first. And then we would award the contract on November fifteenth. So I'm seeking authorization to advertise for bids on the courthouse entrance project and to schedule that bid opening during that November first meeting.
That'd be my motion.
A second?
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a substitute motion. Move that we delay the bid opening until the second meeting in January of twenty seventeen.
We have a substitute motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Substitute motion dies for lack of a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Buscree?
Yes.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, let's see. Item B.
Buildings, Buildings and Grounds received bids for the first floor remodel of the courthouse. This creates several new courtrooms on, in the courthouse annex portion of the building. We have done a review of the bids. Six bids were received. The lowest responsibl, lowest responsible bidder, as determined, was Mac Construction with a bid of seven hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And we are seeking your authorization of that, the chair's signature to that contract. And this would be taking alternate two A, two B, and two C. And this would be taking alternate 2A, 2B, and 2C. The last cost estimate before bidding, they had provided a cost estimate between just over $800,000 to $950,000. Before, when I'd come to you asking for authorization of the contract, we were looking at a cost estimate of approximately $1 to $1.2 million. So we are significantly under our original estimates.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Your write-up says funding will come from construction funds. Where do construction funds come from?
It is, we use that term because it's, it describes the accumulated building and bond funds. But this would be specifically out of bond funds. We'd utilize whatever money we have left over from our master plan bonds first and then utilize, follow up with the next series of bonds that, funds that we already have in place.
Mr. Chair, if I might, how much is Pennington County in debt?
You would have to ask the auditor that.
Approximately how much debt does Pennington County have?
He's a buildings and grounds guy. He's a buildings and grounds guy. He's not the auditor, George.
You're out of order, Mr. Chair.
I just thought I'd help you.
I can speak to project costs and what we have available for funding those projects. I can't talk to what the, speak on how much the county owes.
Mr. Chair, if I might, would you disagree if I said that the county has bonded out to about $65 million? Would that number be in the ballpark? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Cool, all these buildings that George is talking about, or Commissioner Farabee is talking about at $65 million, how much are they worth as assets? So if my buildings are worth a million, if I sell them, but I paid $200,000 to build them, you're going to have some debt until you pay them off. But in the long run, are they used? And are they being used again? I just talked to a commissioner that was here a long time ago, and she said the detox hasn't changed in 25 years. They thought they were going to expand it back then, and it's been overrun since probably two years after she did. So that's how long we've been waiting for buildings to move forward. And then we moved out of this building for a reason. And Judge Davis can tell you that. Because the courthouse was long overdue and basically needed us to have a different building. We were overrunning the courthouse. So these buildings just didn't come to pass yesterday. They have been in the works for many years. And we are collectively working, not just with Pennington County. We are working with the city. So if we're saying the city's wrong, the county's wrong, everybody's wrong on these buildings, there's a lot of people involved. Taxpayers are policemen, firemen, judges, people that work in the system that actually know the system. So when we talk about government spending and taxpayers, who are you talking about as taxpayers? Or who are we talking about as taxpayers? We're all taxpayers. We're all taxpayers. We're all looking out. That's our job. That's why you elected us. We go to the meetings. We don't just say taxpayer spending. I went to, what, 20 meetings this year on just buildings and ground stuff? That's my first year.
Okay, the agenda item is the first floor remodel bid award. So that should be the focus of the discussion. However, we are scheduled for planning is only at 10:30, so we've got 40 minutes.
Okay, let me speak some.
To fill in. So maybe we ought to just have a free-for-all here for a while.
Well, the bottom line.
We go ahead and have the meeting. And I would ask that there be no more discussion of these political generalities about who says what and who's a taxpayer and who isn't and all that sort of thing. Let's stick to the agenda and the agenda item.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion, please?
Yes.
I move to award contract to Mack Construction for the Pennington County Courthouse first floor remodel project and accept alternates 2A, 2B, and 2C for a contract value of $791,150 and to authorize the chairperson's signature to the construction contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is going to be pretty disruptive to the first floor, obviously. What is going to happen to all those offices and people that are there now? I hope we don't have to rent spaces for them someplace else.
I think that all of that's been accommodated through shifting of spaces that won't be under construction immediately. But I would let Judge Davis speak on in regard to making sure that all the courthouse staff is covered that way. That's accurate. This isn't a rush job. I stayed out of the highway fray, but that project has been going for about three years now. And this is just the culmination. When you start talking about fueling stations and federal regulations, it takes a ton of time to make sure we aren't making a mistake. And I know from building committee meetings that that's been the process there. And we followed that same process with the courthouse. I've continued as the representative. I mean, I started this about 1973 when I first came onboard and have been an ad hoc member of the building committee from that time forward. I think you're my 36th constituted commission that I've worked with. Some have been more pleasant than others. But now that we're coming to the end of this, we've shifted judges. We're sharing spaces. It's anticipated that the building will be online by about January 1st, and we're willing to put up with anything to get there.
So after the, and I've known Judge Davis for a long time. After the lawyer double speak, where do I have to rent places for you to move some people?
There you go, Commissioner.
That's the bottom line?
That's the bottom line.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, on this subject, if any of the community would like to meet with Mike Peterson and Mike Cool on how the process works, basically on the process, instead of just listening to people up here that haven't been to the meetings, it's huge that you go and ask about the Pennington County Courthouse first floor bid award and see what they do. And see if that process for the taxpayers of Rapid City hasn't been what it was supposed to and that process has been followed completely and how they've saved money and how they've done a bunch of it themselves. And just, there's a whole different picture behind the scenes than someone throwing something up front. That's my bottom line. And sorry I had to make a big thing on it, but it just gets you sometimes when you have to go to all these meetings and someone comes up and talks about something. Go to the department head. Go to Mike Peterson and Mike Cool. Public, you are welcome to visit them at any time. That's the bottom line. Instead of throwing stuff out. Okay? Thank you.
Anything further on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll repeat and repeat. Can we afford all of this spending? Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Buscree?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Hi.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, we're going to go into recess until 10:30. Go ahead, Jay.
If I may suggest, would you entertain the idea of taking up the executive session matter in the meantime?
It'd be fine.
Sure.
Make a motion we go into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
And Jay, what, to discuss contractual or litigation?
Litigation.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Is there a second? I'll second the motion to come out of the executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we need to convene the Board of Adjustment.
Make a motion we go into Board of Adjustment.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Adjustment.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item A for the Board of Adjustment is variance request 1611 to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet for a garage in a low-density residential district. The applicant and property owner is Clay Voyles. As this property exists today, it's zoned low-density residential district. It's 3.51 acres. Access to this property is off of Pioneer Circle, and it currently contains a single-family residence and an onsite wastewater treatment system. In July of this year, the applicant applied for a building permit to put a 24-by-24 detached garage on the property. Later in July, he applied for this setback variance and stated that when the contractor came out to start working on the garage, he measured, and it was found that the original measurements were inaccurate and that it was not going to be able to meet the 25-foot setback in its proposed location. On August 10th, staff spoke with Mr. Voyles regarding the location of the proposed garage. He indicated that due to the existing location of the residence and the driveway, the garage would be better accessible in its proposed location. You can see kind of where they've put boards to indicate where they would like it to be. He also indicated that he would have to remove fencing and construct, in addition to his driveway, if the garage were to be moved to a different location on the property. At the time of this staff report, we have not received any complaints or concerns regarding the subject property or this variance request. There are four criteria that must be met in order for the Board of Adjustment to determine if a variance should be granted. The first one is that specific circumstances or conditions exist on the property. Staff has verified through a site visit that there are no exceptional circumstances, such as narrowness of the lot, topography, or sighting that exist in this situation. However, as I stated, the applicant has stated that the garage would be more accessible in its proposed location. The second criteria is that the variance does not grant a use, which is otherwise excluded in that zoning district. This would not grant a use, which is otherwise excluded in low-density residential districts. Garages are permitted with the issuance of a building permit. The third criteria is that specific circumstances, a strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require that the applicant move the location of the garage to an area where setback requirements are met. As I stated, he, you can see here the fencing that he has going down his driveway. He has stated that he would have to remove some of that fencing and extend his driveway if he were to put it in any other location on the property. And the fourth criteria is that granting the variance is not contrary to public interest and is harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting this variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest as we have not received any complaints or concerns. However, it would allow for a 15-foot side yard setback in a low-density residential district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. If the Board of Adjustment does approve variance 1611, staff recommends two conditions be included.
Any questions for Cassie? Do we have a motion?
Move approval with the two conditions.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we need to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item B, road name, Norris Peak Lane for Pennington County, and approval is recommended.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? Tom? No? Do we have a motion?
Go ahead, Ms. Nancy.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item C.
All right. Good morning. Kelsey Roush, Planning Department. Item C is a layout plat for Cindy Dickmeyer, Robbins Roost Cabins, to create Lot 1R and Lot 3 of Boyum subdivision. Let's see. We are located outside of Hill City, approximately half a mile or so, a little more. The plan is to subdivide in order to sell part of the lots. She was having some problems coordinating everything, and she wanted to plat and sell off portions of it. As of right now, the plan is to wait until spring and see how things go to finish the final plat and everything. We are going to be requiring a site plan showing all of the existing setbacks to the property lines for all of the existing structures prior to application of final plat and all of that. So there's seven cabins and a fourplex rental unit. And there's also a single-family residence on the property. There's four or so separate onsite wastewater treatment systems throughout the property. They've all been permitted, operating permits and everything. Basically, this is just to see how things would lay out for her in the future. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
And staff would recommend approval.
Link motion to approve for layout plat PL 16-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
Item D, conditional use permit appeal for Steve and Catherine Venticker. Bring the property up here. The, this has been in front of you once before on July 15. Two meetings ago, sorry. The neighbors of the property have appealed this conditional use permit in order to get more information regarding the community well system. You have, should have a copy of the email from the state that should have been included in the packet. I'm sorry about that. It just got forgotten. The state says that based on the, based on the numbers that were discussed, it would be unlikely that adding an additional vacation home would trip them into being a regulated system by the state. vacation home would trip them into being a regulated system by the state. It's too hard to complete, to know exactly how many people are there every night. You have to have, they have to be the same people for every, for 60 days, and it's just too hard to regulate that kind of thing. I know that some of the neighbors would like to come up that made the appeal, and then we also have the applicant is here as well. So. You can use my pictures.
Yeah, thank you. Hello, my name is Lon Buener. I had the opportunity to talk to you at the previous meeting of this item. I went back and looked at the video several times of the last meeting, and what I have done is I have kind of put together a summary to provide some additional information as well as provide my comments with regard to several discussions I have had with DNR. So if I could, I'd like to just give you a copy, and we can kind of...
Go right ahead, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
The first general topic that I'd like to talk about is water quantity. There's been some discussion on whether or not we actually have water quantity issues in our neighborhood. And we briefly touched base on this before, but in 19, or in 2003, mandatory cisterns were required by our homeowners association, and there were a total of 16 properties that installed cisterns at a total cost of about $30,000 to the neighborhood. And these actions were taken because of our water quantity issue, and we continue to use those cisterns today. Item B, no additional HOA development from the original tap opportunities has been developed, or has been, has occurred. In other words, property owners since then have come to us and said, can we tie into your system? And we've said, no, we do not have enough water. And the last three homes built were required to spend their own money to drill and equip their wells. And again, we would not have taken that action if we did not have water quantity issues. And keep in mind, our water quantity issues are periodic. We depend on the weather a lot to determine how much water we're getting out of our wells. Item C, several property owners have had water commercially hauled, and a fair amount of our HOA members have portable tanks that they haul water with in their truck or a trailer. And again, we wouldn't be doing that if we didn't have quantity issues. Then the last item with regard to water quantity is we have been told that the property owners have installed a 400-gallon above-ground tank and that they have a verbal contract with a water hauling contractor. And perhaps this is just proactive activity, but yet I would say that this is indicative of actions one would take if you were encountering or anticipated water quantity issues, and I will touch base on that a little, little later. Regarding water quality, the property owners have stated that they have not experienced any water problems since January. However, a sample was taken on June 7th indicating that the water was bacterially unsafe for drinking and washing uncooked foods. This information was not made available at the previous meeting. And again, although Wayne King and I both expressed concern to you in our earlier meeting about water quality, neither the property owners nor the planning department that knew about that information brought it forth in the discussion in the last meeting. We did address this in a separate letter to each of you, you know, late July. We are concerned that the property owners had an unsafe drinking test, and again, this is a shared well with other owners tied into it, and they elected not to make the other shared owners or the homeowners association aware of that bad test. The last item with regard to water quality is we have experienced numerous water quality issues within our neighborhood. And I didn't do a very good job last time because of the time constraints I put on myself of explaining where that contamination is coming from. There was a lot of questions asked about, is the well safe? The contamination issues that we have seen is not from the well itself in our shared well systems. The contamination that is occurring is a result of the use of the cisterns. Most of the times when people would call me and say our well is bad, I would tell them, take a sample of the water coming into your cistern directly from the well. Have that analyzed. If it's bad, give me a call. Every time, they would come back that the well sample was fine, but yet their water was contaminated because of the cistern. Let me kind of show a schematic, because I don't know if everyone understands what our cistern looks like. This is what mine looks like. I've seen the cistern several years ago on the subject property. If I recall, it's very similar. You have an underground water source line coming from your well. It enters your cistern, and then you have a line that goes to the top of your cistern, and you have a valve. And you have a float valve with a float. It looks, it works a lot like a toilet. The water level goes down, the float goes down, the valve opens up, and you get water from the well. Water level drops. If you don't, if you don't have enough water to keep up, when you check your cistern, you're going to see your water level being lower. This is the ground level. You have a lid. I happen to have a PVC vent with a cap on mine, so some cisterns may have that. You then pull water from the bottom of the cistern to your house. So when you talk about the quality of the water from the well, you're talking about this here. When you're talking about the quality of the water from your tap in your house, you're talking about over there. So we have to be a little careful when we talk about water sampling and water test results. One concern that I did put in that letter in July is, is those samples that the property owner has been running, they, they don't list the sample point, and they say that they're well samples. Well, I don't really think that's the case, but I have not been able to confirm whether that is the case or not. I'll come back to this a little later. The next general topic I'd like to briefly talk about is communication and data. I'd like to point out that on May 17th, we had our annual road district meeting. We're a fairly small community. We have one dead-end road that goes in there. The attendees of that meeting were the Ventikers' current HOA officers, myself, who was past president. You had three of the other shared well owners there of the system that they are on, and we also had the majority of the homeowner association members there. At the end of the meeting, we had everybody introduce themselves, because there's usually a couple new people in the neighborhood. And I'd like to point out that the property owners elected not to use that opportunity to tell us what their plans were on their property. And again, they said that they have owned this property since January. This is May. No one in our community was aware of what was going on. We knew that there was some, some construction activity going on up there. And here we were, just a matter of days, if not no more than a couple weeks, before the notices were to be sent and the sign was to be posted. But again, they had a tremendous opportunity, tremendous opportunity to let us know what was going on, and they didn't do that. Next item, and this, this comes out of the letter from the planning department that you had in your packet dated, dated today, and it says, and I'll quote, "The homeowners association has not provided any documentation regarding water use, each shortages, or testing results to the planning department," unquote. Well, I'd like to point out that the homeowners association has never received any request for that type of information from the planning department. So even though they're stating in here that they didn't receive any information, they have not asked for any information. Mike Anderson, who because of a conflict cannot be here today, he did receive a written request from them for some well information. He received it via certified mail, which was kind of surprising to me, because we're a pretty close neighborhood, and we just don't expect to get communication via certified mail. However, I will point out to you that in the planning and zoning meeting, they did point out that perhaps they were going to have to consider legal action against the previous property owner. So perhaps they were wanting to make sure that they could get whatever information they could to start to pursue, pursue that. I don't really know. I will tell you that the information they requested that we had was furnished to them by Mike. I also would like you to know that all current information regarding water quality, water quantity flow rates, in-house water quality, and potential cistern contamination is available on their property. It's available on everybody's property. We do not meter our wells. Because that information is available on their property, we don't archive it, and we don't go out and get it as a homeowners association. And I'd like to go back to my schematic and explain that to you. You take your cistern lid off, you have access to the well flow from the main source. So you can take a sample there, have it analyzed, and determine whether or not the water coming in to your cistern has any water quality issues. You also obviously can take a sample from the tap in your home, which is downstream of the cistern, and get analyzed to see what the water quality is there. If that test's bad, and again, I point out to you that they had a bad test on June 7th from wherever that sample was taken. If that test's bad and this test's good, then you know your contamination is in a cistern. And again, our history in our neighborhood says it's not uncommon to have cistern contamination, particularly in situations where people aren't there full-time, because stagnant water in a cistern creates some contamination. We've seen that. Others with their own private well are fighting that issue right now. The other thing I will tell you is you can take, you can use it with your lid off, or I happen to use my vent, and what I do is just use a stick. And I've got a little mark here, and what I do is I take my little cap off, and I'll stick this line right where that top of my vent pipe is. You can do it at the top of your cistern. And I've got a little pencil mark right here, and if my water level is there, my cistern is full. Very simple. If my water level is below here, my cistern is not full. Now, keep in mind, as soon as I take that cap off, I can hear if I'm getting water or not. So if I'm not getting water and my cistern isn't full, I know, okay, the well is trying to recharge and not producing right now. So what happens if I don't have any water here? Well, then what I do is I go like this, and I can get down to about here, and if I still don't have any water, then I'm about eight inches low. I know from my cistern that one inch is 15 gallons. So I can gauge, okay, how short am I? So what I do to try to understand about my water quantity is if I'm low, when I go to bed, I'll go out there and I'll just note where I am, where it is. And while I'm sleeping, I'm not using water, and I'll come right back in the morning, and I'll do the same thing and see what my water level has done. And based on how many inches, I can easily convert to how many gallons that is. So within that property, you can check on how much water am I getting, am I gaining or losing? You can check on the quality of the well water. You can check on the quality of your house water, and you can see whether or not you have cistern contamination. So because of that, they can ask for a lot of data, and they have apparently expected a lot of data from the homeowners association, but we don't, we don't have it. We don't have much, because it's all available to them. The other thing I will tell you is we have said that we use one gallon per minute flow restrictors. All you have to do, and I've done this numerous times, when people would call and say I have a water problem, is listen and time, how long am I getting water? If I sit there an hour or whatever, if the well is flowing and you're getting water for 20 minutes, you've got 20 gallons. So you can readily tell how much water you're getting to your cistern by just listening and seeing and, and, and timing the amount of flow that you're getting. And again, our well is sporadic. We'll produce more today, a lot more today than we did two days ago, because we had a real good rain yesterday. How much water they get before that well shuts off is going to be a function of how much water other users are using. So it's not that you have a system that's water-filled, and every time your float goes down, that you're going to get water. So there is, it's, it's not difficult, and many of the homeowners do go through the process of trying to keep an eye on how much water am I getting? Am I gaining or losing? Do I have a problem? With regard to communication, I also would like to add there on number J, when I went back and looked at the, at the video that one of you stated to, in discussions with PJ, that, quote, "Also to work with the neighbors on it to see their concerns," unquote. And PJ also mentioned the possibility of including a couple engineers from planning and zoning in that meeting if we met with the neighbors. I'd just like to point out that we were not contacted for any meeting for our concerns. I did find it interesting when he said that he'd like to include some engineers, because perhaps they could get to the bottom of some of these issues, because I'm an engineer. Mining engineer from School of Mines. I had a lot of geology training in school. I did not go to work in the mining business, but I went to work in the oil and gas business. And I have 27 years of experience on the production side of oil and gas wells. I have literally worked with thousands of oil and gas wells in my career. I've worked with wells that have electrical submersible pumps like we use. I have worked with wells that are in fields with natural fractures like we have. It's not the same situation, but it's similar. I have used that experience and knowledge to solve some of the difficult problems and questions that we had regarding our water system, but not all. But I did find it interesting that he thought that an engineer could perhaps help, and I just wanted you to know that I've done what I can do with the knowledge to, to try to deal with those issues. The last item that I will talk about is the public water systems and regulation. I stopped by the planning department, and I did get a copy of the email from Mark Mayer, and I know that it was not originally in your packet. I hope you've had the opportunity to read that, because I am going to, to talk about it. I called him last week to get clarification, and then I talked to him yesterday, as well as I talked to Barbara Freedeman yesterday, also on the DNR staff. The particular concern I had in, in talking to them dealt with what was stated by the planning department in, in their letter to you in the packet. And that's what I wanted to talk to Mr. Mayer about. And Mr. Mayer told me that the statement that's made in Section G, number two, it does not properly reflect his comments. And I'd like to just read that and explain to you why he told me that that does not reflect his, his opinion. After he had talked to me yesterday, he decided he was going to call planning and, and the planning department and tell them that we had our discussion, and whether he did do that, I don't know. But what this says is, and I'll read what they put in your, in your, the letter to you that was in the packet. "If the applicant were to use the subject property as a vacation home rental, it would be classified as a transient non-community water system and would not require the shared well to be a regulated community water system by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources." So it says, how I interpreted this when I first saw it, was, hey, if you go ahead and give them this permit and it's a vacation home rental, they, it will, they will not be required to have that shared well be a regulated community water system. Well, what Mr. Mayer's email says is it would be unlikely that adding the additional vacation home would trip them into a regulated system. So in talking to Mr. Mayer, in talking to Ms. Freedeman, what he tried to say in his email, and what I think was misinterpreted, is he said, "The rules are the rules, and the rules are very, very clear and very black and white, and that is, you have 25 people for 60 days or more, you must be regulated." So when he said it's unlikely that that vacation home would trip them in a regulated system, he said that because he is the program administrator for the South Dakota Water Drinking Water Program. He has oversight on 682 public water systems in South Dakota. That was the number as of July 2013. And his experience tells him that you make that a vacation home rental, he doesn't think that they're going to rent it often enough that we will trigger the 25 people in 60 days, because he said five homes on a system, based on his experience, it would take quite a bit to trigger that. There are several issues about that that I talked to him, and he kind of backed off a little bit after I talked to him about my concerns. First off, I don't know what the numbers were that the planning department talked to him about, but they said, based on the numbers we discussed earlier, I think it was 10 people. But yet with this vacation home rental... But yet with this vacation home rental, and with the recommendation that they've brought forward, you can have 15 people there during the day, and you can have children ages five and under that don't count in the occupancy. Well, one clarification I did get from DNR is the five-year-old and under doesn't mean anything to them. They count every person. He said, "If you have a one-month-old, we're going to count that one-month-old." And he said, "If you had this vacation home rental at the bottom, at the base of Terry Peak, maybe, you know, maybe you could get there." But I told him, I said, "I don't know, and nobody knows what they're going to do with this vacation home rental." I believe when they did have one brief discussion with Mike Anderson and Wayne King, that they indicated that they've been talking to church groups, et cetera, about potentially using it. If they, it's, it's a nice home. It's a nice area. If they would like to use that as kind of a resort for nonprofit people, I don't know that they wouldn't trigger that. And I also explained to Mr. Mayer, and he understood my concern, the other shared well owners have no idea when that's going to be triggered or if it's triggered. And I explained to him that I don't think difficult record-keeping is a good legal reason for anybody to say, "Well, that's why we didn't go get regulated." Because I told him, if we have the public come there, and I've also kind of already explained to you, and I explained to Mr. Mayer, that we have cisterns, and they're a challenge to, to have good, safe drinking water out of, and he fully understands that. I said, "If we have the public come and someone gets sick, and they start to do their due diligence, and they conclude, based on the people that have used that vacation home rental, that we should have been regulated, that's a situation that I don't want us to be in." And he recognized that. He also brought up a point to me that said, "You know, the property owners may want to be regulated. It'll be a cell point, hey, my water's regulated, it's safe, come on and use my VHR." So again, that's a potential area there, that having a shared well with these regulations is, is going to be a challenge. The next item, I said regarding the statement made in section G, number three of the letter that the planning department put in your packet, Mr. Mayer told me, and I quote, "That statement is totally untrue," unquote.
Sir, your conversations with Mr. Mayer and, and him not being here, and you representing him through your words, you, you're taking quite a little time. What is your point?
Well, my point is that you have, that you're being misinformed, and if you're going to attempt to make a decision, I'd like the correct information based on my discussions with them to be brought forth.
And is there something we're missing? You, you've related several dialogues, and the point is...
My, my, my point is that this statement is untrue. Where, and this statement says that if this was not a vacation home, and up to 10 people on a long-term basis were there, that it would be a public water system, that, that it would change to a public water system and need to be regulated. So that's a very, very important part, point that I'm trying to get you to understand is they're saying that if...
You've made that point several times.
Well...
And so I'm going to give you two more minutes.
Okay.
Make your point.
Well, my point is that Mr. Mayer has told me that you do not know if it's going to be regulated or not until at that point in time, you look at the, all five homes, and you can determine whether or not there have been 25 people there for 60 days. And the question has come up by, by one of the commissioners, how tight are the rules? And again, the, the, the direction that I have had or received is that it's very tight. The last, the last thing that I will quickly touch on, and I want to quickly give you the map. Ms. Freedomman did tell me, because I talked to her about the cistern issue, and there is some additional information that I would like to share with regard to the testing. Because even if you're regulated, all the testing that, that is required by the DNR is from this point here. None of that testing will deal with the contamination. So even if you have DNR guiding your testing under a regulated system, you still have the risk of contamination. And so what is very unique about our situation is the fact that we use cisterns. And Barbara Freedomman told me that of all the public water systems in the Black Hills, she only knows of two where cisterns are used at the endpoint of their systems. And of those two, I asked her, "Are there, are there vacation home rentals on those systems?" And she said, "No." And what I have given you is a map that shows you four of the Black Hills and a little larger area. This is the number of public water systems that DNR oversees. And again, it's just a very unique situation where we have shared well and cisterns.
Okay, thank you.
When Wayne and I have talked about, about contamination, it was, it's, our, our area of contamination concern ties back to the cistern, not the well.
Sir, are you going to want to talk next? Please, please come forward.
Okay. My name is Wayne King. I'm the vice president of the Homeowners Association. I'm the one that tests the water, and I've been working with these wells really hard for the last four years. I've probably pulled 22, 23 tests on these wells. Mrs. Troutman, or Ms. Troutman said, was asking, "How come our well was doing so good? And how many houses we added to the well, and how come our well has diminished?" Well, it's not the houses that were added. In the last, since 2000, there's been four wells drilled within 1,000 feet of that well. And one is like 308 feet away, one's 452 feet away, one's 580 feet away, and they're all deeper than the existing well we had drilled for our, our complex in 95. That's one of the reasons that our quantity of water has gone down throughout the years. The only other thing I got left here is I'm the guy that asked for that nitrate test at, at our last meeting, and somebody beside, behind me says, "Oh, that was accidentally left out of the packet." And, but, and when I was done talking, Mr., Mr. Steve come up, and he says, "I have that test right here." And he showed it to George. And so two days later, I go down to planning and zoning and say, "I'd like a copy of that test." You all know that that particular test I asked about showed bacteria in that well, and it was not acceptable for drinking or washing vegetables, right? That was on the 7th of June. Okay, then they turned in another test, the test that they had in the packet.
Excuse me, who's they?
Um, I don't want to butcher their last name, Steve and Kathy, okay? And then that bacteria test showed good. Well, I've, I fought the bacteria. We've got one well we really fight it in, and the only way you can get rid of bacteria in a well is to shock chlorinate it. I've done it three times to a different well in our system. And I don't, what I'd like to, what I'd like to find out is how come one test was bad, and then seven days, or six days later, they come up with a good test? Because I don't, I'm not knowledgeable of them. Shock-chlorinating our well, I've been to Mid-Continent. I know that that's the only way you get rid of bacteria, and I've done it. And it's, it's a process. I can explain it in 30 seconds if you want. You got, okay, you got to shut down all the houses on the well system, okay? Then you got to pull cap off the well, dump in the right amount of Clorox, which is in a six-inch shaft or whatever, is four ounces for every 10 feet of water you got. Then you got to circulate it for two hours. You have to let it set overnight in the well without going to any houses, and then in the very next day, or for about three or four days, you have to pump the well until there's no trace of chlorine left in it. It's not an easy process, and I don't believe they did it. And I'd like to know how the well was considered safe after that, you know, after the original test was bad. That's about all I really have, but I don't, I don't, I truly don't believe that that second test is, is a legitimate test after the first one was bad. I've tested that particular well three different times, but I have never, I haven't tested it since August of 14. That's all I have, and I would like an explanation a little bit on that, okay? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? You folks have equal time.
Steve and Kathy.
But please don't dig it.
Actually, Stephanie Lee's here. I'd like to have her go first because she needs to leave. It's okay.
Hi, everyone. I represented, actually, my sister owned this house, and the Vent Hikers bought it through another agent, and they called me when all this came about. And so there were just a few things that he, you know, I wanted to present to you, I guess from my perspective, I don't really have a dog in the fight. I guess, in regards to a property being used as a vacation rental, in my business, for the last 12 years, whenever I've sold property or had people that buy property, you know, people will look to the covenants if it specifically disallows using it as a vacation rental. Obviously, there was nothing describing any disallowing of this particular property to be used in that manner. So the buyer intended, you know, to purchase it in that manner. And so what I'm hearing, I guess I'm a little bit confused now, what I'm hearing, the issues against potentially having him be approved by you, because there's nothing that they have within their covenants that would restrict him from using the property in this manner, would be water supply and water quality. So water supply, in my opinion, as opposed to having myself and my family buy the property or have him rent it to myself and my family with six kids who do laundry every day, who do wash, wash dishes every day, who mop floors every day, 52 weeks out of the year, I would think, and this is where I'm not adding up, that the current neighbors would be glad that the property would typically only be used maybe 16 weeks out of the year. So the water usage, in my opinion, for him attempting to use it in this manner would be significantly less. You know, typically, when people use a vacation home, they don't cook three meals a day. They don't do laundry. They don't wash, you know, their bedding two, three times a week, or their towels, et cetera. So just by the usage of the property being pared down to probably no more than 20 weeks out of a year, less than half, and, and then their, their actual behavior within that house during the vacation rental would cut the water usage down significantly more so than if he were to, you know, rent it out to somebody or college students or a family of six or eight people. So I think that I'm not adding up in my mind why that would be a concern for them because they're actually using less water. In regards to the water quality issue, it was a little bit of a surprise to me because my sister lived there for 11 years, never notified that there were any issues. She had her grandchildren stay there, they drank water, they were under six months of age. So I understand that, you know, they're under an umbrella that they don't have to report, and they don't have to test, but I would think ethically, you know, as a homeowners association, if they've ever found that there were nitrates or that there were bacteria, they should disclose, you know, to the other homeowners, just from an ethical standpoint, that there are water quality issues. Obviously, the seller, I mean, the owner at this point has been proactive about putting in the osmosis system so that whatever drinking water would be coming in for his family or anybody that were to use the house would be purified. And so I just want to make a point from that standpoint, that if there really are and have been water quality issues, why wasn't my sister made aware of it? And why is it going to be something that would restrict him from being able to use it, you know, in the future? So I, that doesn't, those are the arguments that I'm hearing against approval for him. And the other point I want to make is there are a lot of people that buy homes, they don't go through the proper channels to be able to be approved, to go through the proper certification. And so to me, this feels a little bit like no good deed goes unpunished. He's going through the proper process to do it correctly, and, and because of that, and many other, you know, people who would buy it would never really notify that that's what they were using it for, they would just rent it out. So that happens quite a bit. So, you know, I think that should be taken into account that because he's doing it properly and he's going through the, you know, the channels to get certified on, on a level that you would expect him to, then there's some sort of pushback from the Homeowners Association when it was never restricted in the covenants, and it's due to quality and quantity, and both of those are not adding up in regards to why he should be restricted to use it in a manner that was never prohibited when he bought the property. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. Otherwise, I'll let him speak.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
And I'd like to begin by thanking the planning department, Kelsey, PJ, Brittany, Holly, Cassie, and Chutima. They've been a lot of help. Every time we had a question concerning information, they give us directions where to go. Through the whole process, Kathy and I have worked with the state and local DNR office representatives. They have included Mark Meyer, Joanne Knowles, Aaron Dries, Judeen Holden. And then we've also worked directly with Department of Health, Charlotte Johnson. And then finally, Connie and Bill with Water Tree have been great resources in regards to a variety of water treatment processes for, for not only in our home, but also for potential well issues down the road if I, for me to assist the HOA as a HOA member. And Darren of Water Tree, or excuse me, Frontier Water is our source for hauling water, which was never brought up in the packet. It was, it was brought up that we were going to haul water for our vacation home use. And that was never, the whole process, that was never, I mean, it's in your packets. And the whole thing about the water quality and, and water supply doesn't really come into play if I'm hauling water for my vacation home anyway. And that's going to be Rapid City Water. Again, I'd like to thank Stephanie for coming here. I think she, I don't think me saying everything doesn't really reflect everybody, somebody else's opinion, so. And then a remark was made as to how we, we take the water samples. The water samples, we were directed by Charlotte with Department of Health, was to take it from the faucet. Now, the reason the well is listed as the analysis, analysis spot is because when you bring in the Mid-Continent paper along with your water sample, your choice is public water supply, a pool, spa, or beach, bottled water, or a private well. Well, ours is from a private well. We didn't take it at the wellhead. We took it from our faucet, which in return, the water comes from the well. Just want to clarify that. Let's see here. The bacterial problem, when we weren't using the house, we did shock the cistern. And shocking the cistern is exactly what he said. You add the chlorine beach to the, the cistern, you run it, you basically run that whole water through your house, and then you check the water again, and the water checked fine. So there was nothing wrong with the well, strictly with our cistern. And we followed the, the direction from not only Mid-Continent, but also from Charlotte with Department of Health. So everything was done correctly there. Regarding the wells, I have, Mike Anderson did give me well information for all the wells associated with the HOA. But there again, I mean, I could give you the information if you wanted. Two samples were taken two different times, two nitrates and two bacterial samples were taken over the course of 20 years regarding the well I am on. Both, one was in 2012, the other one was in 2014. EPA recommends a sample taken every year. They're not required to do that, but, and as an environmental person, I do recommendations all the time, so. But that's all they had available for me, and the other well information's here. I don't know if you have one of them or not. And I think, in summary, we, for the past two months, we have worked hard to provide solution to everyone's concerns. Our, our house needs to be kept in a pristine shape in order for us to use it as the way we need, want to use it. We've agreed to haul water during the relatively few weeks a year that we are using the home as a vacation home. We have received and implemented many ideas from the Department of Health, Natural Resources, and Pennington County. Our home has received the recommended approval from the Planning Commission with the 16 conditions which we have met. And Kathy and I look forward to your, the county's approval today. Thank you.
Steve, do you have pictures of your...
Steve, do you have pictures of your, I think you have a Custer vacation home rental on this one, did you bring pictures to show us of those rentals?
I did not bring, no, I did not bring Custer, I'm sorry.
Did you bring, do we have this one? Kelsey? Can we see what that looks like?
This is showing Pine Haven Drive and then the Grace Bible Church parking lot. This is the beginning of the easement, um, for his, and then goes south or to the east towards Pine Haven Drive. This driveway to the property. Residence, this was the former fire pit that was converted to a flower pot. Egress windows. Interior of the residence, here's a copy of this Department of Revenue license. A little blurry in there, sorry. The backyard area. Fire pit was up there, on top of the, there. This is the, um, area of the new septic system drain field.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Anyone else wishing to speak? And in this case, in support of, because we've heard half hour of opposition, so.
Just, if I could, um, Chair, there's a couple concerns you have. Based on state law, after twenty-five people, you have to have stricter regs on your wells. It has to be regulated, am I correct? Steve, is that what?
That's what, uh, Mark Meyer had said.
Okay.
But from my understanding, and I think clarification, but it has to be the same twenty-five people for sixty days, is my understanding of it. And according to what I had talked to Mark, it, we would never fall beneath that because we would only be there for fourteen to sixteen weeks sporadically through the year.
Right, and what I don't understand is you got five houses, and I don't know if anybody went out there, but those houses are huge. Are you telling me at any time that none of those people have had more than twenty-five people out there? She just, Ms. Stephanie just said she had six, eight people at a time in hers with her sister, and that's just, you're, you're telling me there isn't anybody that ever visits these houses or they have more than twenty-five people for a certain amount of time? That, I guess that didn't make sense to me, if there's already, and, and again, if you see these houses, they're not, you know, like, small houses, they're huge. The other thing is, um, when I talked to you, there's, one of your homeowners that were out there asked you to show him how to do an osmosis system to help him with
Yes.
his water system.
Right, well, I talked to him and he, he realized his, uh, osmosis was between five and six, and I thought that was okay, you know? But when you talk to more environmental people, um, Brittany actually pointed that out, that water with, yeah.
And I have met with Brittany and PJ and Kelsey and some of the people from the Planning Department to figure out the facts on this. I will listen to someone, but then I will go to the people that do it every day. So, um, the shocking of the system helps the chlorinated, it doesn't kill everything, but then you have another backup on this house, which is the osmosis system, so he's doing a double thing to try to help this. Another thing is, is somebody lived there before he did. If you had water to quality and you have no metering, how do you know if John used more water than Steve did? How are you going to track that if you have no metering? Maybe Joe used most of the well that day and maybe had ten people, and then Steve had two. I, I didn't get how you guys are saying you have a water quantity issue, how are you measuring that you're running out of water? You just, someone comes over and says, "The cistern is empty, we had to fill ours today, and four other people said the same thing, and then we decided we have a water, uh, quantity issue." Again, those two things, for me, the shocking the system, osmosis, and doing the things you need to do, um, for any of those houses, not just vacation home rentals, seems like a safety factor to me.
Mr. Chairman.
So.
I hope you're going to get around to a motion pretty quick, or you're going to pull defeat out of the jaws of victory, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, so my motion is to approve the CUP.
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Buscud.
Got to do something, you talk, it's three o'clock this afternoon.
Sorry, but I just wanted the public to know if they need some help with some of that, how they can do some.
Okay, just to clarify, Jay, as I understand it, the, um, action here is an appeal of previous approval. And your, your motion is to...
Hey, Aldrin with the State's Attorney's Office, if...
Uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval of the CUP.
Right, if, if the Planning Commission approved it and that got appealed, if your motion, as I take it, is to okay that, then it would just be a motion to approve or uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Yep.
Okay, just so, just so we're correct on, on this. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'll make a substitute motion, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to see the neighborhood, um, get together, and I've, I've chatted with both sides, so to speak.
Now, what, what is your motion?
My motion is to postpone this decision, our decision, for at least one more meeting and, and possibly two more meetings, to give the neighbors a chance to, to work out their differences.
Okay, we have substitute motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Substitute motion fails for lack of a second, back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the original motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've, as this thing has evolved, uh, the thing that popped in my mind is, what liability does the government have, we the government have, when we okay, give a permit for a situation like this, for people coming in from the outside world, so to speak, to assure them, or they assume that this is safe water, and I underscore safe, not clean, but safe drinking water by EPA standards? When they rent a place like this for a day, two, a week, whatever, the assumption is that it's safe drinking water. Having said that, what obligation, and maybe our Deputy State's Attorney has the answer, maybe he needs to do some research, what obligation do we take on as a government? Another reason for my postponement of the decision.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you're in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. We're finished with the planning and zoning. Rapid City Chamber of Commerce, item twenty-one A.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to remind everyone that with the new fiscal year starting September one for Chamber of Commerce, that, um, usually, there would be a new person that would start, um, attending those meetings on behalf of the county, and I, I think we should maybe look at that. Both they've, they've asked, but then also I brought it up.
So, that decision needs to be made in time to meet their publishing deadline, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, we should allow, I, I mean, we should let them know what we're doing.
Well, I think the three commissioners who will be income, or, carried over to January one should decide who that should be. So, uh, you and I can recuse ourselves.
I think that's fair, but, uh, I hope they do it soon.
You're the vice chair, you, you take over the meeting at this point, to settle this issue, and, uh, and we'll go from there.
Oh, Miss, Madam Chairman, Chairperson, Madam Chairperson, each.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner.
Uh, after, after, uh, leading the charge to withdraw the money from the, the Chamber of Commerce, I don't believe I'm the proper person to, uh, serve on that.
That's okay, sir, I, I seconded it.
Well, as, as I recall, I've, I've fully supported you in that effort, so.
So, Commissioner Farabee, are you a volunteer for this job?
I, I think I just said I fully supported.
I would have no problem in, uh, in keeping, uh, Nancy as the person to return.
For the first of the year.
And come next to January, the new chairman will appoint somebody else, I guess, that's, unless you don't, I know you don't want to, but.
I'll second that.
And what's in, what's in their brochures, uh, that's, I guess, too bad.
Ms...
That'd be my preference, but.
Nancy, I know you recused yourself, but, um, would you be willing to take it till January first?
I'm not speaking on the issue, but as I understand it, Nancy would continue to serve until January first.
Okay.
But in order to have the right name in the publication that the chamber puts out, they're asking that the designee be declared before September first of this year.
I move that Commissioner Buscud be our designee.
Is that a motion?
I moved, yes.
I'll second that.
I think, I don't know, was it Calvin Coolidge said, nominated, I will not run, elected, I will not serve.
Is that a discussion on the motion, sir?
Time for a vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we vote on us three, vote now?
By roll call.
Roll call.
I'll help you. Buscud?
No.
Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Yes.
I, it, do you want me to do it right away, Nancy, or do you want to do it through the rest of the year? I, I, doesn't matter to me.
Um, I, I think you should do it right away, Ron, really seriously.
You'll let me know, I'm sure, when the next meeting is.
Mr. Buscud, I'll help you, I promise.
You may not issue me the credentials, but.
Next item, Mr. Chair.
I think it'd be good, thanks.
Uh, that's mine, the resolution, um, you, I'm sure you've read it, and it's, it really does nothing right now, but, but Secretary Berquist would like us to, uh, approve his plan to add some highways to the National Multimodal Highway Network. Right now, it doesn't really do anything, but he thinks that in the future, the money from the Highway Department and the feds is going to be based on these highways. And so, he wants, right now, the only thing that we have in South Dakota is the two interstates. And he wants to add, and look on your map, the roads that are in the red, uh, one of them is, is in Pennington County, Highway seventy-nine, and, uh, so, he wants to add all these, or at least go to the feds and say, "I want to add these roads to this multimodal highway network," and don't ask me exactly what that is, I don't know. But it would, hopefully, in the future sometime, give us some more money that the highway, federal highway administration's going to be giving out.
Move approval of the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If you're in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, item twenty-two A.
Good morning, I think it's still morning. Uh, my name is Florence Thompson, I live in Caputa, South Dakota, and I'd like to talk to you a little bit about taxes. There's an old country song that explains how the taxpayers of Pennington County are feeling, and that's, "What part of no don't you understand?" The voters have been sending a very clear message, taxpayers are hurting. We've had petition drives, I participated in them, I volunteered to get, collect signatures. We had the wheel tax, we had the school, um, district property tax increase, and we had the Rapid City Civic Center increase, tax increase. Those were all voted down resoundingly by the voters. We elect people to government to represent us, not behave like a bunch of lords and ladies, spending our money on whatever strikes your fancy. We expect you to be frugal, we have to. We want you to stick to your budgets, as we have to do. I don't think you're spending like drunken sailors. Drunken sailors spend their own money. Now, it's been reported that in a very tone-deaf way, this commission is considering trying to sneak through a property tax increase, which cannot be repealed by the voters. This is called stored CPI, that's the Consumer Price Index, CPI. It measure, this measure indicates that citizens are steadily required to pay more and more because it continually goes up and up. But wages have not kept pace with this, and many taxpayers are on fixed incomes, as I am. We want our government to hold the line, not do automatic increases. As Will Rogers said, "Some men rob you with a fountain pen." Some men, I mean, some men rob you with a gun, some men rob you with a fountain pen. But public officials can rob you with a law, and just because you can do something doesn't make it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is item B, twenty-two B.
Yes, Jeff, for the Task Force.
Do we have anyone from Ellsworth Task Force here?
May I approach?
Yes, you may.
Hi, my name is Jeff Carsroot, I'm the chairman of the Ellsworth Task Force. I represent the board, which consists of myself, Pat McLeagan, Chris Lean, Matt McGrath, and with an extended, that's the executive board, and then there's an extended, extended group of the, uh, it's the members, and that consists of about ten other individuals, including the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and several, several other local and, uh, and retired military professionals. I come to you on behalf of them, asking you to reinstate the twenty-five thousand dollars asked in the letter, um, for Budget twenty-seventeen. I know that you guys are all aware of, of our group and, and, because the group has been around for probably about twenty to thirty years, so I don't know if I need to go into, to, uh, deep discussion on what, what we do unless you have any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, so Jeff?
Yes.
How do you spend the money we give you?
Yes, um, well, you don't give us any money. Um, we, we, uh, we, we are funded by the city of Rapid City for seventy-five thousand, and then, in the past, it was twenty-five thousand from the county, from the Pennington County, uh, that has not been funded for probably three years, I believe. That money is spent, um, about... That money is spent about about a third of that money, if you want to consider the $25,000 from the Pennington County Commission, would be in executive salaries, and that's a part-time director, which is Matt McGrath. And the rest of it is travel. We do about two conferences a year, one to two a year. We go to the, me, myself and Matt went to the Air Defense Communities Meeting in Washington, DC about a month and a half ago. And the rest of it is in form of sponsorships, like if they have an airshow, we will kick them $1,000. When we changed to Global Strike, coming away from Air Combat Command, they made a statue of a B-1 back at Air Combat, back at Global Strike, and they asked us and DIAS to contribute $1,800 for that monument, so we funded that. And then there's, if they have their annual awards banquet, we're typically a sponsor there, so it's just smaller sponsorships locally, and then travel and correspondence with Air Force officials and with Boeing and Lockheed Martin.
So we usually have a paper that shows your budget and what it's spent on, what's your total amount in your budget? Do you have that?
I have one copy, absolutely, and I can sure give that to you. This is the budget, and then this is the financials from CATAL dated February 29, 2016.
Thank you. Do you want to look at these first, Busch?
And I know our ask is not significant, it is only $25,000, but we do a lot with that money. The impact from Ellsworth is, by their numbers, is $320 million. And then if you go by the fact that every dollar bounces around anywhere between conservative three times, to others, say somewhere around five times, so that impact is well over a billion dollars in annual revenue to the Rapid City and Pennington County area. It is our second-largest employer, so it's substantial. We take it very seriously.
So Jeff, you guys have $231,669 in your account?
Yes, we do.
I have a question, you know, and I don't dispute that at all. You said you don't think the county has given, keep Ellsworth anything in the last three years?
Within the budget, correct.
In your book, it says in 2015, you got $25,000 county contribution, and 2016, $12,500. I don't think them figures.
I don't think that's correct, no.
And that's your certified audit?
The year before we got here, it was $25,000, then last year it was supposed to be zero. Am I correct, Commissioner Farabee?
Correct.
It did go from 2015 to 2016, but I, you know, maybe I misspoke. I thought that was years ago, but it seems like forever.
I thought it was zero.
I did, too. I did, too.
That's my recollection, yes.
Yep. I believe that we were funded, the last time we were funded was probably fiscal 2015. So I'll look into that, Ron.
Well, and maybe we can find out through our records, too. If that would be okay with everyone.
Sure.
Budget supplement?
How do you do a budget supplement after the fact? When did we vote on it, Ms. Holly?
We'll find out.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And to your question of the $230,000, this is definitely, we're not afraid of that number. We need at least that number if a BRAC is to happen, and we fully expect a BRAC, a high possibility of a BRAC in 2019. Other communities around the nation are doing the same thing, and I can tell you that sharing numbers amongst the other communities, we put away a lot less than other communities, and obviously they have populations and abilities, so.
So if you're looking at 2019, what are you looking for, reserves, or how much are you looking to have in that account?
We need to have $500,000 the moment we hear about BRAC, and then we'll also continue to raise funds from private, too.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep. Any other questions? September 6, is that still the date for the budget?
Yes, it is.
What time?
What time?
Yeah, what time, is it the same time?
Depends on how long people talk.
Yeah, I didn't know if it's a special, it's not a special one, so it's the same, the same one, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Okay, next item is item 23A.
Okay, yeah, we've got them right here, but we can copy them for you, Jeff. Okay.
You want these, I don't want.
Okay, Commissioners, item number 23A is just a notification for you as the board that the SDACC, SDACO, is not offering the Outstanding Service Award this year, so you nominated Dustin Willett, and he has been notified of this, but there will not be a submission to the state for him. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. And number 23B, I am seeking approval of the resolution for the County Achievement Award for the USDA Forest Service Stewardship Agreement as presented. What you have in your packets is the entire award nomination that will be sent to mail today, if approved by the board.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And 23C is the same thing, seeking approval of the resolution for the County Achievement Award, the Sheriff's Office Garden Project.
She'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports.
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Went to Board of Directors' meeting of the Association last week, and I got some information here on the 2015 Annual Report about the Public Safety Improvement Act. You might want to look at the book, I'll leave it with Holly, and you can look at it. Here's another about the same thing, what the 2013 Criminal Justice Initiative has done for South Dakota, and of course, there was a person there from the Governor's Office who, that's the best thing since they invented the bread slicer, so. Also, I'll leave a tentative schedule for the convention, which is, I don't know, September 11th, 12th. It's only two days long this time, they're cutting it down, it's in Sioux Falls. And also the proposed resolutions and policy statements, there aren't many resolutions. They kind of decided, I think, and I agreed, that it's not the year to go begging, counties to go begging for money from the legislature. They've been pretty kind to us the last couple of years, so it's going to be pretty slight from us this year. I want to talk to Holly, they want to, they're looking for still some sponsors. Actually, it's all about money, you know, for the convention, and they would like Holly to get ahold of somebody from Black Hills Materials and see how much money they would be willing to pony up, because we do a lot of work with them, and that's basically who everybody goes after, is people you do business with. I haven't told you that yet, have I?
Is that Hills Materials?
Black Hills Materials.
Is it, who, it's Black Hills Materials?
I don't know. Is that Hills?
Hills Material is Kroll and Pete Lean and Sons is Pete Lean.
Well, Kroll's.
Kroll is Hills Material? Kroll is Hills Material?
Sure.
Scratch that one off.
Actually, Kyle's pretty nice.
Have each county talk to him.
Kyle's been on our committee from Kroll, and he's showed up at every meeting, and he's actually been very good on our committee, so.
And then, I think you've heard our State's Attorney talk about Marcy's Law, which is on the ballot. We're working on, the Board of Directors is working with their attorney on what we can do to help defeat that law. That would be very extremely expensive if that thing passes, which right now, it looks like it's passing 80% probably to the voters. So we're, everyone there is expecting it'll pass, because they don't really understand it, what, most of the stuff that's in it, we kind of already do, but the stuff that isn't in it is going to be very expensive. It's being funded by a billionaire out of California. He's putting up all the money in every state to get the laws passed. So, and I warned them, that, we're getting back to Chamber of Commerce, we can't spend any money on taxpayer money on doing anything with the ballot issue, other than educate people what it really means. And we could do some education on costs, et cetera, et cetera, but we got to be careful not to take a side, I guess. That's about it.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. Chair, and I should have got this under item 21A, I guess. The paper, newspaper has a notice here for South Dakota DOT to have a public hearing in Spearfish, I mean, excuse me, Deadwood, August 24, to revise the big grant funds, the big grant rules, Bridge Improvement Grant, and one of the interesting rules that they want to modify is says, "The revised rule identifies bridge condition, user impact, and local participation as some of the factors to be considered in the scoring criteria, rather than the only factors." And I read that as, that
Isn't working.
Want to become subjective, the more subjective, the more discretion that, I remember Transportation Board has, and the point being is, I think we probably, at some point in time, we're probably going to be involved in this bridge fund, so maybe we ought to have somebody go listen in on.
Is Tom?
At 1 o'clock.
Motion for George Farabee to represent us? I think Busch will second it.
At City Hall. And along those same, about the same time in the paper, the Transportation Commission gave, gave, awarded, granted, City of Yankton $855,000 bucks out of that $7 million fund. So that's almost 12% of the fund, just to one bridge. So what does that tell you about the bridge fund? Thank you.
We're not getting any of it.
Well.
We get zero.
It's just that, my point being, it's a slush fund for those that are in a power to debbie the money up. Thank you.
Do you plan to go to that meeting in Spearfish?
I'm going to try to, isn't it, yeah.
I think it would be useful.
All right.
If you would.
All right.
Any other committee reports?
I'm on the Fair Board, and we've been working for about a year and eight months on a solution for the event center. You have a lot of moisture coming in that building. We have went to SDSU, they're coming back with some results. Number of engineers, contractors, different people, in order to try to find a solution for the moisture in there that's causing the ceiling to have moisture and other issues besides that, but we'll be bringing it to the Building Committee once we find some of those solutions, and then to the City Council, our City Council, County Commissioners. So that's going to be coming forward here soon. So, one of the bigger issues in the fair, it's going to be, they've really made some positive changes to add to the fair and added, which a lot of people were saying, the Extension Office with the 4H and the kids in those groups, and they really like to see all those awards and different things that kids do, and then their parents like to come and watch that, so they made sure they included Matt and his 4H group or his Extension Office this year, so that's an exciting part, and then they're re-landscaping and doing some things for making more of a, what do you call it, a gathering spot over by the German tent, and so they're making it a little bit aesthetically, and for people that have to walk from the 4H buildings all the way around, it gets a little bit hot, so they put benches and different things there, so they've been working hard to make some changes, positive changes at the fair, so, or at the fairgrounds.
Okay, anything else? Next item is item 25.
Move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 26, Items from the Public.
We wore them out.
Item 28, maybe?
Move to adjourn?
There's a second. Motion is a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.